October 15th, 2019. On behalf of the members of the school board and our superintendent, I welcome each of you present or watching. Our quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. One of our school board members, Mr. Harris, has an excused absence. He is on travel with his job. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Huntington Middle School, Ms. Neamora Smith and Tavius Bly. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. First, Ms. Neamora will come forward and deliver the invocation. She will be followed by Tavius, who will come after her and do the pledge, but you can accompany her right where you are. So Ms. Smith, tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started.
My name is Neamora Smith. I'm an eighth grader. I like to draw and hang out with friends. My favorite subject is math.
Alright.
And one day, I plan to be an entrepreneur.
Alright.
Please join me in the invocation. We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our effects here today. May we act wisely and well.
Thank you.
My name is Tavius Bly and I'm an eighth grader at Huntington Middle School. Some hobbies that I like to do, I like to march with the Heritage High School marching band. I also like to game. One day, I hope to be a biomedical scientist.
Yeah, alright.
Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. Again, both of them have done a very good job. Can we give them a round of applause again? Supporting Neamora and Tavius tonight are their family members and school family. Could they stand and please be recognized? The board really appreciates the encouragement you have given these two students, and we thank you for bringing them out to tonight's meeting. So thanks again to our future entrepreneur and our bio chemist? Scientist, okay? Alright, that's what I'm talking about. That's two magnet schools we have here. I'm looking forward to seeing both of you in the future. We're going to move the agenda. I think next we have our board recognitions. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir. We'll move into front.
Good evening.
I have the pleasure of presenting this month's recognitions. Newport News Public Schools Apprenticeship Program is a structured professional development and state certification program that combines hands-on career training and practical classroom learning. The program is designed to develop highly skilled employees. During the two-year process, apprentices gain a deeper understanding of their department's operations, and how their work fits into the division's strategic plan, and supports our students. The program is a one-of-a-kind program in Virginia administered by a school division through the Virginia Department of Labor and Industry's Apprenticeship Office. These customized courses enhance the apprentices' skills and talents. The school division has programs in four occupational areas: child nutrition services, custodial services, transportation, and clerical support. Tonight, we're recognizing our graduating classes in clerical support and transportation. Our graduates will receive a certificate of completion of apprenticeship from the State Council. These dedicated employees successfully completed a rigorous sequence of program requirements to earn a Commonwealth of Virginia Certificate of Completion of Apprenticeship. We'll begin by recognizing our newly designated clerical specialists. Please join us in congratulating Tony Barnes, the Administrative Secretary at General Stanford Elementary School, who's a clerical specialist. Shatrice Banks, Secretary at Warwick High School, Clerical Specialist with Honors. Shamika Brown, Secretary at Denby High School, Clerical Specialist. Betsy Bullis, Secretary at Discovery STEM Academy, Clerical Specialist. Sarah Cole, Clerical Specialist with Honors, Secretary at Charles Elementary School. Catherine Cook, Secretary at Gatewood-Pete, Clerical Specialist with Honors. Carolyn Curry Choffey, Secretary at Custodial Services, Clerical Specialist. Casey Francis, Administrative Secretary at Yates Elementary, Clerical Specialist with Elizabeth Marshall, Administrative Secretary at Epps Elementary School, Clerical Specialist Tamika Martin, Secretary at Woodside High School, Clerical Specialist with Honors. Nima McCray, Office Assistant at Woodside High School, Clerical Specialist with Honors. We'd also like to acknowledge Nona Baykolt Holmes, the Administrative Secretary at Crittendon Middle School. She's unable to join us this evening, but she's graduating with Clerical Specialist with Honors as well. During the two-year program, these clerical specialists completed 4,000 hours of coursework and on-the-job training in customer service, effective communications, English, math, Spanish, which they told me is a little bit of a challenge, workplace technology, and leadership skills. The clerical apprentices also sharpened their skills in crisis training, public speaking, office management, and event planning. Again, congratulations to all of our clerical specialists. Please join us in congratulating Tamara Baker, Master Bus Assistant II, graduating with Terry Browning, Master Bus Assistant II, with honors. Tracy Burrell, Master Bus Assistant II, with honors. Deborah Cooper, Master Bus Assistant II, with honors. I'm sorry, these are master bus drivers. My apologies. I have changed your title. Handsome Harris, is that correct? Deidra Ivy, graduating with honors. Donna Jackson, Master Bus Driver, with honors. Beverly Motley, graduating with honors. Katina Overby, graduating with honors. Karithia Pfeiffer, graduating with honors. Our next transportation honoree, graduating with honors, Barbara Smith. Master Bus Driver II, Lakeisha Smith, graduating with honors. Also graduating with honors, Lisa Smith. And rounding out the team, Garita Tyler, Master Bus Driver, with honors. Our transportation apprentices also completed over 4,000 hours of coursework and on-the-job training in many of the same areas: customer service, effective communications, workplace technology, and leadership skills. In addition, they also honed their skills in bus routing, dispatch training, and key driver training. Thank you, and again, congratulations to all. Thank you. And again, we wish all of our apprenticeship program graduates congratulations. And I'd also like to acknowledge Stephanie Hots, our Director of Human Resources, and Nina Farish, our Employee Relations Development Supervisor who oversee the program. Thank you very much. Every day, drivers in Newport News Public Schools transport several thousand of our students in 300 yellow school buses. These buses are driven by some of the school division's most dedicated employees, who provide safe and efficient transportation to over 20,000 students each day. Being a bus driver is a great responsibility, and our next honoree has served students and the school division well for 41 years. Recently, Patricia McGee was named the Bus Driver of the Year. Ms. McGee, would you please come forward? Ms. McGee has shown great dedication to our special needs students, and she's watched many of them grow up. She has developed long-lasting relationships with families and students. She's described as dedicated and hardworking. She is passionate about her students, and she's a skilled driver. The criterion for a Bus Driver of the Year is stringent. Honories must have outstanding attendance, excellent annual evaluations, and they must volunteer and maintain a great safety record. And speaking of attendance, Ms. McGee has earned numerous, numerous awards for outstanding attendance year after year in her 41 years of service. I have to note that the leadership team says that she prefers to drive an older bus. Oh, see, all of you are nodding. But as Bus Driver of the Year, certainly, and with that many years of service, she can just drive whatever she likes. We'd also like to acknowledge our Rookie Driver of the Year, and I think that person's unable to join us this evening. And so our Rookie Driver of the Year is Hewlin Ivy, and he joined the transportation team about five years ago, so we'd like to congratulate Hewlin Ivy as the Rookie Driver of the Year. Now, the role of our next honoree is essential to ensuring that our students arrive at school safely and securely. Bus assistants are responsible for maintaining safety on the school bus by providing one-on-one attention to our special needs and younger students. The assistants are assigned to the most challenging routes, those that include young students, medically fragile students, and students with disabilities. This year, Coileen Brown was named Bus Assistant of Distinction. Now, did I say that properly? Ms. Brown has distinguished herself over the past 16 years of dedicated service as a bus assistant. For most of this time, she floated from bus to bus as a permanent sub. She's always been the go-to person to ride on the bus with new drivers during their first days in order to assist them and make their first experiences positive ones, all while still being able to make sure her young charges arrived at school safely. She recently found a route that she loved and has accepted that as a permanent assignment. The transportation leadership team noted that Ms. Brown is professional and dependable, and that she has successfully assisted thousands of students during her career. Congratulations on being named Bus Assistant of Distinction, Ms. Brown. Our next honoree is the Rookie Assistant of the Year. In each year, the Transportation Department also recognizes a bus assistant with five or fewer years of service with the Rookie Assistant of the Year Award. The awardee must have outstanding attendance and demonstrate extensive knowledge of the bus's equipment and safety and emergency procedures. The Rookie Assistant of the Year is Claudia Sellers. Ms. Sellers, would you please come forward? Ms. Sellers works wells with her students. She's had great annual evaluations, and she maintains all of her required training. She joined the Transportation Department in 2016, and even though her time with the department has been short, her pride for her job has not been short. She's accepted all of the challenges with grace, and she's recently begun teaching new bus assistants by giving them hands-on training. She has assisted some of our high-need students with care and dedication, and she's worked with numerous bus drivers and assistants throughout her career. Her expertise and dedication are truly appreciated. Congratulations, Ms. Sellers. Our next honoree was unable to join us, and he is Steven Dill, who was named the Top Wrench. So Mr. Dill is part of a team who maintains over 300 school buses and 200 support vehicles, and he's been a part of the transportation team since 2001. His leadership team noted that he works diligently while helping coworkers and sharing his expertise. So again, congratulations to all of our Transportation Employees of the Year. Job well done. team that have joined the honorees this evening, as well as their families. Would you please stand and be recognized? We thank you all for coming and supporting them. Training and development are top priorities for the Newport News School Board. As part of its collective effort to maintain effective leadership, the school board has participated in numerous development programs, conferences, and workshops through the Virginia School Boards Association and the National School Boards Association. This evening, our school board members are receiving their own awards for their dedication to advancing their expertise from the Virginia School Boards Association. The VSPA Academy provides training in effective leadership and governance to school board members and support personnel. Each year, VSPA recognizes board members for their dedication to improving their skills through conferences on such topics as leadership, school laws, strategic planning, and legislative issues. Each of the persons being recognized this evening has a certificate from VSPA at his or her seat. These awards honor their participation in the academy's programs for the past two years. School Board Member Douglas Brown earned the Award of Distinction. School Board Member Shelley Simons earned the Award of Honor. Chairman Gary Hunter earned the Award of Excellence. And Board Members Vice Chairman Lisa, or excuse me, Vice Chairman Lisa Searls Law and Board Member Dr. Terry Best and Superintendent Dr. George Parker earned the Award of Achievement. And John Ely earned the Award of Recognition. Our Award of Distinction honoree, Mr. Brown, will be invited to attend a special luncheon during the VSPA Annual Convention. Each of these dedicated public servants have received their award certificate and a distinctive lapel pin, some of them have their lapel pins on them, to symbolize their commitment to effective school board governance through participation in the academy. On behalf of the students, staff, and citizens of Newport News, we thank you for your dedication and leadership of this school division, and congratulate you on your well-earned awards. That concludes this month's recognitions. At this time, we'll take a seven-minute break so that our honorees and their guests may leave if they choose to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about seven minutes. Thank you.
For the third year, educators in Newport News Public Schools were invited to expand their teaching arsenal through Innovate Conference 2019. While the last two years were heavily focused on using technology in the classroom, this year's Homegrown Summer Conference broadened its offerings to focus on even more engaging teaching practices and cutting-edge learning experiences. Hundreds of employees attended over 130 unique sessions over two days at Heinz Middle School, including: How to Select the Best Books for ESL Students, Coding with Robots, Helping Young Men Succeed Academically, Using Google Classroom, Lesson Planning with Digital Tools, Responding to Failure and Feedback, and Increasing Family Engagement. Both attendees and presenters received Professional Development Points for participating. Over 120 of these presenters were NMPS employees and leaders from almost every department and grade level. Other presenters were global companies, local businesses, and community partners. No matter what theme was being emphasized, the goal was the same for every session at Innovate Conference 2019: To Effectively Equip Our Educators to Empower Students, Ignite Creativity, and Foster Critical Thinking Skills to Prepare Future-Ready Citizens. Mensville High School's Award-Winning Show Choir, M-Pulse, opened their doors this summer to spread the love of music to the next generation. The talented high school students hosted their first-ever Show Choir Summer Camp for rising fourth through eighth-grade students. Organized by Mensville's Choral Director, Jennifer Jarrett, a team of music instructors, high school students, guest artists, and parent volunteers provided a full week of fun through singing, choreography, and a variety of dances. Twenty-five elementary and middle school students attended the summer camp, with some campers traveling from Picocin, Williamsburg, and even Richmond for this one-of-a-kind experience. These campers formed the kids' show choir known as M-Power, and buddied up with M-Pulse students, who constantly encouraged and shared tidbits of wisdom with their younger friends. Each day, M-Power members worked on vocals, reading music, and experiencing the joy of singing together. But since show choir is about more than music, the camp focused on the power of movement. Guest dancers were invited to teach jazz, hip-hop, and ballet, while working through complex choreography for the week. complex choreography for the week's grand finale. At the end of the week, M-Power and M-Pulse joined together for an inspiring and energetic performance. Families and educators were amazed at the young talent and how quickly they put together a polished routine, thanks largely to their high school buddies, who empowered them every step of the way. Young ladies in Newport News Public Schools seized the opportunity this past summer to grow as world changers. During the Second Annual Bloom Summer Leadership Institute held at Woodside High School, forty middle school students gained valuable life skills from professional role models as they learned to become more than a princess. During the Wonder Woman Power Hour, twenty professional women were invited to share their life, academic, and career experiences with the young ladies. These extraordinary leaders represented a range of diverse careers in the community, education, government, and private fields. High school and college-age students helped guide the discussion, which allowed the middle school students to gain insights to the skills and mindset necessary for obtaining their life goals. Discussions continued during the Networking Lunch, where the middle, high school, and college students were all able to sit down face-to-face with the female professionals. At the same time, parents were invited to a separate session, where they learned how to empower their daughters to be champions through strong communication, positive self-identity, and vision casting. Bloom, a division-wide student-led empowerment initiative for young ladies, is moving into its third year, and as freshmen transition into high school, they will continue to flourish as global leaders. Every extra effort is a benefit for our students in Newport News Public Schools: extra time for reading, extra help devoted to individual students, or extra supplies to enhance classroom instruction. Parents and community members can help supply that extra bit by financially aiding our schools through simple, everyday errands. When you're out shopping, keep your eyes open for box tops for education or labels-for-education logos on your groceries. Simply cut the box tops or the labels-for-education UPCs and beverage caps and have your child drop them off at school. It's that easy, and a huge benefit for our schools to receive extra funding and supplies. And while you're shopping, don't forget to use your reward cards in a smart way. Your Food Lion MVP Card, Harris Teeter's Vic Card, the Kroger Plus Card, and other reward programs can be linked directly to the school of your choice. So when you buy everyday products, you're supporting your child's school. To link your reward card, visit the store's customer service desk for more information. Parents, make sure you pay attention to important dates when they're sent home with your child, and then help spread the word. Anyone can attend spirit nights at local restaurants, and most community days, carnivals, or festivals are open to the community. At these events, raffle sales, cakewalks, and other games can help a school raise extra money. Plus, they're fun events for the whole family. And you can help your school form a strong parent-teacher relationship by joining your local PTA. Membership fees alone can help a school with budget needs, and some schools even offer rewards for joining the PTA. PTAs are instrumental in organizing many fundraising efforts, along with seasonal options such as t-shirt sales or holiday craft fairs. Supporting your school is easy. A little bit of extra effort goes a long way to help ensure that our children have the best education possible.
During our meeting, we provide time for the public to address the board. These are scheduled at the early part of the agenda and also toward the end of the meeting. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we can consider your comments and concerns, and we'll get back with you at a later date. Please comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin, a green light comes on. A yellow light signals that you have thirty seconds remaining. A red light in the beep says that your time is up, and we will ask that you would bring your comments to a conclusion. That being said, as you hear your name come up, please come forward, and you can address the board. So we do have some cards today. We have one of my favorite individuals, Ms. Janie Basemore.
I love being a favorite. Good evening, Chairman Hunter, and members of the school board, and Dr. Parker. Didn't have very much. First, I want to say congratulations to all of the recipients tonight. And one of the things I would say for those bus drivers and the assistants, you couldn't get me out there at five o'clock in the morning to be warming up a bus. So my hat's off to all of them, and we really appreciate them for what they do for our school division. Don't have very much tonight, except to say Huntington, Huntington, Huntington forefront. We vow that nothing else is going to take priority over Huntington, because we have been at this now for a while. Things, to me, are at a standstill, and we are going to continue to tell our city officials that they cannot put recreation before education. And we're going to keep telling them that. And by the way, I am their favorite, too. So I just wanted to say to you all tonight, let's continue. Let's get these doors of Huntington reopened. Wasn't those some precious babies from Huntington tonight?
Yes, they were.
Yes, they were. We've had a number of students like that. And we will continue to ask you to keep Huntington's doors open. We do not want to see the doors close in June 2020. We know it would be a lot of work, but we would like to see the sixth graders come back to Huntington at Heritage. Ladies and gentlemen, let's continue the work. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Huntington shall rise again.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, just excuse me, I'm not a very good public speaker. My name is Michelle Nordean, and I am the Yates PTA President. And I just wanted to bring to your attention an issue that we're having at the school. Mr. Parker's probably aware of it. Several weeks ago, Yates received new playgrounds, and everyone was excited about them because we found out that our playgrounds were twenty years old. And like I said, everybody was excited when they were being installed, and then we saw how small they were. And so now the parents have been asking the teachers and Mr. Edwards every day, what can we do about these playgrounds? I learned this morning that another parent had reached out to Dr. Parker in a very polite email about the size of our playgrounds. I reached out to Ms. Jones, the Instructional Supervisor for Health and Physical Education, and she kindly responded to me, and she told that, as everything, the number-one concern about putting the playgrounds in was financial. I understand that the money was a number-one consideration when replacing the playgrounds. However, practicality needs to be taken into consideration. We have approximately sixty-three kindergarteners, and the playground for the K through second grade is way too small for all of our students. We have a second playground for the third, fourth, and fifth graders. We have approximately one hundred and four fifth graders, and this playground is way, way too small for them. Not only is it too small to put the fifth graders on there, but it's physically too small. When you see the fifth graders out there, they can sit down on slides, and their feet will touch the ground. We feel that this playground would be more appropriate for the kindergarten through second-grade playgrounds. Mr. Edwards and the teachers, they're scrambling to try to figure out how we can use, how to best incorporate the new playgrounds into our recess time. Several teachers have started limiting the number of students that are allowed on the playground, which defeats the purpose of a recess. They're allowing fifteen students at a time when they go out to play on the playground. Others have to go and walk laps or play on the blacktop. Some teachers have started staggering their recess times, so the grade levels can no longer take recess at the same time, so if your best friend is not in your class, you don't get to see him at recess time anymore. Other teachers are splitting their recess time between a morning and an afternoon time. Mr. Edwards and the PTA, we're trying to come up with a solution to the playground problem. However, after speaking with Mr. Edwards this morning, even adding a slide to the K, learning how much, even adding a slide to the K-two playground cost, I'm not sure what the PTA can do. We have limited funds, and we want to help all the children. I just wanted to bring this to your attention, and hopefully have you guys help us figure out a solution to our problem. I have pictures, if you guys wanted to look at them to help you understand these. We had huge playgrounds in the past. I took aerial pictures, were from Google Maps, and then, oops, time to go. Okay.
You can finish.
I was going to say, I just took pictures off of the webpage, and then I took some pictures last night so that you guys could see what it is, and I put some notes in there. You guys are welcome to keep those slides, and if you guys can help us come up with a solution, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Ms. Pinkham Hall.
Good evening. Thanks to all of you for all that you're doing for our Newport News Public Schools, and congratulations on the awards for everyone. We would like to keep the students for Huntington Middle School at Heritage until the doors of Huntington are open again, because that makes the city see that there is an urgency to get this done. If you take the students from the school and close it, Huntington will only appear on paper. There will no longer be an urgency in front of the City Council, and the next school to be done will be Warwick. So in my mind, out of sight, out of mind. So we would like for you to make a plan. We know it's not ideal to keep the students of Huntington Middle School at Heritage until those doors are open, so that there will be an urgency for the City Council to act. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? We do have one more. Mr. Reverend James Brown.
Good afternoon, school board. I too would like to congratulate you on your excellence in various fields. Our students are our most important asset. Not only are they our future, but they are our presence. What we instill in our kids today is going to help them determine what the future is going to be. I'm excited that you guys have been working hard, working with the city, allowing them to know that it profits us nothing to gain the world financially and lose our most important commodity, our children, or they not have the place to go. Playground should be designed so children can play. Obesity and all these other ailments and stuff our children are getting because they do not get out enough to do exercise, along with their menus and things. So we have to start putting our priorities on our children, on our children. I understand that you guys have worked out some things as far as finances are concerned for the school, and you've heard tonight twice that we want to keep the kids at Heritage until Huntington is built, because we realize that if Huntington comes down and the kids don't have a place to go, then what's going to happen? They're not going to rebuild Huntington. We know that, because there are other priorities. The city is filled with schools that need upgrading and things. That money is not going to be there. So we need to keep the kids at Heritage until the school is built. Those little sketches that the city had, those are not plot plans. They're not plot plans. It takes some work to go into plot plans and develop the ground, knowing where the pipes are and all this kind of stuff, and how the structure going to be. So we need that from the city. If they're going to do the plans, we need plans, not just little drawings. So if they don't give you the money to do our own plans, then they need to come up with some better designs and plans, so we can get this thing done. Thank each of you, and God bless.
Thank you. Are there any more cards? Any more card? There being none, we will move on to item number three, our consent agenda. Three point oh one, minutes from our regular meeting, September nineteenth, 2019. Three point oh two, minutes from our special meeting, September seventeenth, 2019. Three point oh three, minutes from our joint school board meeting with the City Council on September tenth, 2019. Three point oh four, the financial reports, revenue and expense report, September 2019. Child nutrition report, September 2019. Three point oh five, our personnel report. And three point oh six, our budget transfer. Those were part of your package, and I hear a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
You heard the motion, and you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a robe.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you. We'll move the agenda to number four, our action items. Four point oh one, proposed CIP budget for fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '25. Ms. Mary Lou Russo will come and...
And Mr. Chairman, I'll take this part. In last month, Ms. Russo lets me fill in for her. I get permission to fill in. Last month, we presented a capital improvement budget for FY '21 through '25. It was a five-year plan, which the city requires that we submit annually to the city manager. This budget that was presented has been somewhat amended based on board input. We appreciate the input from our board members. And as you can see, Mr. Chairman, the only revision to this proposed budget that we would like you to consider this evening for approval is that we have put the fifty-million-dollar cost of replacing Huntington Middle School in the first year, FY 2021, of the proposed capital improvement plan. This is the same figure that was placed and submitted to the city in the original FY '20 to '24 capital improvement budget. I'll entertain any questions that you may have before entertaining a vote. Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Mr. Ely.
So basically, we're doing, instead of giving the city two years, we asked for all the money at one time, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And that was the same approach we looked at in FY '20, knowing that it would be easier to contract both the construction company if we have the full amount of the appropriation in hand, once we solicit any bids for contractors.
Well, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I definitely appreciate that, and I'm sure the rest of the board do, because Huntington's something that we need immediately, and we can't keep waiting time after time. So I really appreciate you and the board for doing that, so we can have our money upfront, so we can get Huntington built and get it going, start our blueprint. So thank you so much for making that happen.
You heard. Any more questions? If not, may I have a motion to approve the CIP?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the CIP as presented by the superintendent.
Second.
You heard the motion, and you heard the second. Time for the question. Is there any more question?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make the comment.
Mr. Brown?
As I've been vocal about the Mosey Architecture Study that was done in, I believe, 2016, and cited several schools, I've been very satisfied in discussions. The superintendent has given me his assessment on the conditions of Riverside and Sedgfield, Huntington, Achievable Dream, Yates, Dozier, and Warwick, which are schools that, school sites that were cited for in need of replacement and revitalization. And so I understand that there's a plan in place. I would always like to see, I've mentioned this before, that I think our CIP full five-year budget should be closer to two-hundred million and include additional sites. But this plan does include Riverside, does include Huntington in the first year. I would like to see Warwick coming into the... Would like to see Warwick uh coming into the, uh, next CIP. Uh, but I understand compromises and assessments have been made to get us the, uh, best budget going forward. So I believe we have a budget now that represents most of our needs.
Mr. Brown, anyone else? There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Uh, we will move on to, uh, item number five, reports and information. First up, five point oh one, we have our solar power purchase. So I guess Newport News have executed a power purchase agreement. Ms. Mary Lou Rosso.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Members of the board, Dr. Parker, good evening. Um, this evening, we want to share with you uh the next step in our energy management work. Our energy bills are substantial, as you might imagine. Um, we spent four million dollars on electricity alone in two thousand fourteen and three point eight million last year. Our gas bill has dropped from seven hundred twenty-five thousand five years ago to five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars last year. That was a drop. I know it sounds like a large number, I'm not paying it. Um, every dollar we spend on utilities is a dollar we can't spend on instruction. So, uh, we've been working to contain our energy costs for years. Um, you know that in two thousand three, or you may not know, some of you weren't on the board then, two thousand three Newport News Public Schools took advantage of what was at that time relatively new legislation from the state that allowed us to do our first energy performance contract. Uh, we did some lighting system improvements, some new energy management controls were installed in our schools and we made some water conservation measures. Those projects generated ten million dollars in savings over the twelve-year period of that contract. Uh, we were able to use that ten million dollars upfront to do some roof work, HVAC work and some window replacements. Uh, we started our second performance contract in two thousand fifteen because our first one had expired, so it was time to do it again. Uh, we did some more lighting improvements, upgraded our energy management systems and were able to generate savings again of ten million dollars, which we used. You guessed it, for uh HVAC work and some transformer replacements. That contract's a fifteen-year contract, so it'll take us through twenty thirty. Uh, we've been watching solar energy for a while and waiting for it to get to where we thought it made sense for us. And tonight, we want to tell you that that's where we think we need to go next in our energy management work. Uh, we have executed a power purchase agreement with Sun Tribe Solar. Uh, next month on your consent agenda, we'll ask you to approve, uh, the authorization of the superintendent to execute some site leases as we move forward. Uh, but tonight, we have Frank Dubek, who is a development manager with Sun, Sun Tribe Solar, to talk about how our solar project's gonna work. Frank.
The energy you guys have created in this room tonight's been amazing, so thank you for having us be here. Uh, I'm Frank Dubek with Sun Tribe Solar. I'm joined by my colleague Seth Herman. Uh, as I've shared with Keith and Mary Lou, uh, my work at Sun Tribe is to bring us into Tidewater area. And it's kind of been a bit of a homecoming for me. Uh, I graduated from Princess Anne High School, went to ODU and my mom's a teacher at Kiln Creek, so uh it's cool to be here and making this happen. So it's with that distinction, it's, um, I want to say that it's exciting to see Newport News going solar. The first wave will be five schools, um, with, uh, over thirty years, we'll save over four million dollars in projected savings. We're able to do that because we can generate that electricity and sell to you cheaper than your utility at a fixed rate and no cost to you, um, for a, uh, given period of time. And you're joining a long list of people who are also on board for this. Uh, Virginia Beach, we recently were awarded their RFP, which we're super excited about. Um, and here's the other schools in the area that we have engaged with. One of the highlights is Middlesex. Um, it's been featured in, uh, on PBS and the Washington Post. And Grettz has been a great hero and proponent of what we're actually doing. Uh, we did two schools for them, two ground arrays, and then we just got awarded a third school. And so they're gonna be the first school system in the country powered on one hundred percent renewable energy. They're gonna save south of five million dollars over the course of that term. And, um, Grettz has been singing our praises. In the Washington Post in March of two thousand nine, the headline, the lead was Virginia Schools Have Seen the Light and It Is Solar. There's two notable quotes from him that I like to share, uh, from Grettz. All of us are telling the same story, all trying to deal with budgetary challenges. This is such a no-brainer. And secondly, he shared, this was the best, most organized construction project he's ever been a part of. And here's the schools that we're gonna go with. Lee Hall, which includes the, um, um, the early childhood education. Gatewood, Yates, Heritage, Discovery. The system size total is about one point nine megawatts. And again, forecasting over four million dollars of savings in thirty years. There's a second wave, we're evaluating and looking at your, um, portfolio. And so I don't have information to share on that yet, but we're hoping we can do more and save more money. So what makes us a really good partner to do this is, um, in its simplest terms, we're a construction company, but more fundamental to our DNA. We understand that renewable energy is inevitable. And so we're really trying to find partners to bring that to fruition. And we use the term partner because this is a strong, long-term relationship. Uh, I dare say the word marriage, but a great partnership that we need to work out over a long period of time. And it's also the right way to look at this. Here are some of the projects that we've been able to do across the state. These are projects that were sold, completed or actually under construction. We've really gotten here because of our people. So our company's setup, it's really ambitious to own all parts of the value chains of development, engineering, construction, uh, operations and maintenance. And so we've assembled the staff from across the country with, um, utility-grade experience. And this is, um, really deep with professional engineers, journeymen, mechanical engineers. Um, we have a dedicated safety director that used to run the program at UVA. Safety is clearly important to your staff and your students and to our employees as well. Um, and by the numbers, we're seventy-five employees, we've got decades of collective solar experience, done over fifty projects to date. We've got, I think, about nine underway right now. We've installed tens of thousands of solar panels, fully bonded with, um, ELE designations. We're the largest PPA provider in the state of Virginia and we've done, um, over eighteen percent of the distributed solar projects in the, uh, in the state ever. And this is the world we live in. So this is historic energy rates, our last fifteen years. It's from the US Energy Information Administration. Basically, in diminutive territory, these go up, um, basically three percent. And this is what is sort of the magic that makes it happen. So a power purchase agreement means that you're gonna purchase the electricity produced by your system at a fixed rate for a given period of time. We're gonna take care of everything from soup to nuts. And as I think Mary Lou may have mentioned, these are service contracts, not capital obligations, so there's no out-of-pocket money. This is what it looks like over twenty-five or thirty years. Um, the magic of, you know, compound interest. So you're gonna be at a fixed rate, likely your rate, the grid rate es, will continue to escalate. And so you guys are gonna be at a really good clip. And this is where our missions really align. So if renewable energy is inevitable and we are really passionate about it, connecting the dots between what we're doing and students and our next generation is really critical. So we were with the need, uh, the National Energy Education Development Group to provide grants, to provide S L L, um, curated curriculum and, um, materials that can dovetail into what your STEM, uh, education programs are actually doing. That's my show. If you guys have any questions.
Yes, Ms. Simons.
So, is there a cap that's looming on the amount of solar that can be?
Yeah, right now there is, uh, and you guys have gotten in before that deadline.
Okay, okay. So, and then isn't there also a rule that, um, the power generated has to be used in the building? How, how does that fit in with the, the power purchase agreement?
Yeah, so we're scaling, we've looked at all your locations, twelve months utility bills, analyze your rate schedules. And really, by law, we have to create a system that matches a hundred percent of that. We can't overdo it. Virginia doesn't want to create a bunch of power-producing facilities. There is net metering, so without getting in the weeds too much here, uh, the power you don't use gets sent out to the grid, typically distributed locally. And then you're gonna get credit for that.
Okay. Good, thank you. That's exciting.
Awesome.
Ms. Searls Law?
Just curious, how were our schools selected, the five that you selected?
Oh, so, yeah, that's a good question. It's kind of a mix of, it's a confluence of things that are coming together. So we're looking at roof ages or available land or, um, uh, yeah, like, that's probably the two primary things we're actually looking at. Some of it deals with scale. Um, we're visiting all facilities, um, crunching all the numbers, we're in your electrical rooms, doing a lot of pre-engineering even to get to here.
Uh, Mr. Brown? Yeah, so a few questions around, is it fifteen years or thirty years is the proposed lease? So it's a thirty-year lease and the cost of electricity is fixed throughout the entire duration or is it variable?
No, it's fixed.
So it's a fixed.
And it's at a clip lower than you're paying right now.
Okay. At the end of that thirty-year period, uh, conceptually, the equipment, there is gonna be new equipment on the market. We own the equipment or, um, the equipment is yours?
Yeah, so we would decommission it.
At the end of that time, so at the end of the time, you could take the equipment back, we could get into a new set of equipment during the contract.
Correct.
Everything that, everything involved, involving the equipment will be on there.
Yeah, it's all on us.
And the, the equipment ages, it has to be replaced, it has to be, you know, maintenance may need to take place, but that is all man, maintained by, by Sun Tribe.
Mr. Ely?
Um, what happens in result of weather, is there any?
We factored in, uh, we use programs that look at weather over a decade and all the extremes as we factored out into what this production would actually be. And, you know, for the roof-mounted systems, the, our engineers are gonna be looking at, like, the way your roofs are designed, they're designed for snow load and for what we're actually doing. So we're not pushing the limits on anything. So I think, I think Hampton got like a foot of snow last year or something. You might, you might have gotten close to that as well. So, um, all of that's baked into what we're actually engineering.
Just making sure we don't have a bad storm and then it's gonna take a long time for your company to come to fix, you know, the solar panels, that won't have any effect or anything?
It's in our best interest that that system runs really well, really quickly because that's, we own it and that's our game, basically. So the, we have a person whose full-time job is monitoring these systems. He sits a couple of desks down from me.
Okay.
So we see everything online. Um, I think we've actually only replaced one solar panel and all the ones we've actually installed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could you just touch on expansion? Uh, we always, obviously, uh, you're, we are looking for a roof life cycle of twenty years, am I correct? If I recall correctly? So as we install new roofs, roofs on some of our, or replace roofs on some of our buildings, would they be candidates for a possible expansion of this project?
Absolutely. I've looked at, uh, the spreadsheet, I have all the roof ages and warranties and, um, roof types. And we've surveyed a lot of them, either online or in person. So, yeah, that's, um, on our minds.
Mr. Chairman, one other question or request, more for, probably for Ms. Russo. As I understand, over the years, we've done various projects of this nature, like replacing our lighting, uh, and doing other types of green innovation, uh, projects that have resulted in a net savings. Is there a, a compilation or report that we can get that will net out maybe over the course of the last ten years, all the things that we've done and how much money has been saved?
And I, any other questions? I just have one, if anyone has.
You guys have had awesome questions so far, this is great.
So tell me about the safety with, um, you know, with all this solar generation energy, how about fire and stuff like that?
Yeah, we've not dealt with that. One of those things was in the news recently, there was an issue with that company and they were in the process of resolving that. So it was an, you know, old technology. Um, we, we've never dealt with anything like that.
No.
We've never had anybody injured, even our, we don't have, we have zero OSHA reportables in our construction process, so. Yeah, that's where.
How would you be able to elaborate on like education integration and how solar technology would be incorporated into?
Well, it's sort of, we're kind of asking for a show of hands, which from the teachers and administrators on how much interest we actually have. And we're gonna go match that need. And so it's not necessarily as prescriptive maybe as, as you might think. Because you guys have your way, your, uh, ways of doing things, we're gonna make sure we kind of dovetail into that. So we're gonna make sure that those, um, materials are there and available, uh, and there's training done. But it's really gonna be up to the teachers to figure out how they can best weave that into what they do.
Thank you.
I mean, it's really amenable to your input, is the, probably the shortest answer.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks everybody. Good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Our, our next, uh, report, uh, five point oh two, our school accreditation update, Ms. Carrie Enot. Hello, how are you doing?
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Searls Law, Dr. Parker and school board members. I am Carrie Enot, the supervisor of testing, and tonight I'm going to share the final accreditation data for Newport News Public Schools. The two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year was the first year where schools must meet the standards of accreditation under the new matrix. This new matrix includes six components. Academic achievement, academic achievement gaps, graduation rate, dropout rate, chronic absenteeism, and starting with cohort twenty twenty-two college and career readiness. A school's assessment performance is used to determine if they will meet the academic achievement standards with all students as well as the seven subgroup populations, Asian, Black, economically disadvantaged, English learners, Hispanic, students with disabilities and white. The daily student attendance rate is used to populate the levels for chronic absenteeism. For our high schools, the graduation and completion index, as well as the dropout rates, contribute to the accreditation standings. And college, career and civic readiness data will not come into play for our high schools until cohort twenty twenty-two, which would be our current tenth grade students. As seen on this slide, sixty-three percent of Newport News Public Schools are accredited. As noted by the green font, twenty of these schools have been accredited for three consecutive years. Please know that Marshall Early Childhood Center is paired with Riverside Elementary in regards to its academic achievement and its achievement gaps. This slide lists the fifteen schools that are accredited with conditions. No Newport News Public Schools have been denied accreditation. This slide shows the accreditation trend for Newport News Public Schools. The star on the slide notes the year of the new accreditation standards began to be utilized. Twenty nineteen was the first year that schools had to use the new accreditation system. In twenty eighteen, accreditation was determined either using the former or the new standards of accreditation. This year, schools' accreditation was only determined by the new system. School quality indicators can increase a level if the school is able to reduce its failure rate by ten percent. The failure rate is based on the true pass rate and not the combined rate that considers growth and progress. In order to determine if a school earns R-ten for an indicator, the failure rate is determined by one hundred percent minus the pass rate. As seen on the sample within this slide, a school with a pass rate of sixty-two percent in two thousand and nineteen would have a failure rate of thirty-eight percent. So ten percent of the failure rate would be three point eight percent. This three point eight percent makes up the R-ten figure and is the measure of growth needed to move the indication, indicator up a level. Therefore, if a school has a pass rate of at least sixty-five point eight percent in twenty twenty, that indicator would get classified as a Level One using R-ten. It is important to note that R-ten can only be used when a school's indicator combined rate is at fifty percent or higher. The following elementary schools showed growth using R-ten for one or more indicators. Carver, Discovery, Stem, Greenwood, Haydenwood, Hilton, Lee Hall, McIntosh, Newsome Park, Richneck, Riverside, Sanford, Saunders, Sedgfield and Yates. The following secondary schools showed growth using R-ten in one or more indicators. Booker T. Washington Middle School, Demby, Heritage and Warwick High Schools. Based on the twenty nineteen results, eighteen schools achieved an R-ten within one or more of their indicators. The schools that are circled are schools that are accredited with condition, but they made the R-ten gains, which shows growth as being. The schools that are circled are schools that are accredited with condition, but they made the R-ten gains, which shows growth as being achieved. In addition to the academic achievement and the achievement gap indicators, high schools have two additional indicators: the high school dropout rate and the graduation completion index. At the division level, the high school dropout rate decreased to one point eight two percent, an improvement over the two thousand and eighteen dropout rate of two point zero six percent. The Level One benchmark for this indicator is five point nine percent. The graduation completion index increased to ninety-six point eight nine percent, an improvement from two thousand and eight's GCI of ninety-five point nine eight percent. The Level One benchmark is eighty-eight percent. You can see from our high school data that schools and students are finishing strong in Newport News. Although the on-time graduation rates are not an indicator for school accreditation, Newport News Public Schools continues to increase its percentage of students graduating on time. In fact, Newport News Public Schools boasts of a rate that is three percent higher than the state average and one of the best in the region. The final data point to report is the chronic absenteeism. At the elementary level, there was an increase by half a percentage point to eleven point two seven percent, still well under the fifteen percent Level One benchmark. Middle school absenteeism rate also increased by half a percentage point to sixteen point nine four percent, which is above the fifteen percent Level One benchmark. High schools decreased their absenteeism rate by two point five percent to seventeen point two six percent, which is above the fifteen percent benchmark, but moving in the right direction. For the division as a whole, all three levels combined, the absentee rate remained at a constant fourteen point seven five percent, which is under the fifteen percent benchmark. When reviewing our data across the division, there is a need for growth. At our fourteen schools that are accredited with condition, there needs to be growth in English reading and writing at the middle school level, specifically with our students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and our Black subgroups. There are also nine schools that are on the watch list for being at a Level Two or Level Three for four consecutive years. These schools must reach a Level One this school year. I would now like to return, or turn the presentation over to Dr. Poll and Mr. Wright to speak about our next steps.
Thanks, Ms. Enoch. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Parker. To ensure continued growth across all schools, the Department of Curriculum Development is focusing on two goals. The first is to ensure alignment of the written, taught, and assessed curriculum. To reach this goal, supervisors and specialists have revised instructional and pacing guides in all core curriculum areas, which allows directors, specialists, and coaches to have a consistent approach with providing actionable feedback to teachers to ensure alignment of learning targets, rigorous and engaging instruction and assessment. This year, elementary schools will use division created, as well as designing their own common formative, many assessments in order to monitor student progress throughout the year. To ensure equity and support, the second goal is to strategically support all schools on a tiered level of need. The curriculum and development team will align support based on the needs of individual schools and teachers. This summer, the professional development team held several online and face-to-face job embedded professional development sessions. These sessions will be continued to be offered throughout the year and will be customized based on data and the results throughout the year at individual schools. Regularly scheduled walkthroughs will be conducted in an effort to best support each school, and a coaching model will be adopted for the entire division to follow in order to offer more consistent practices for building level and division level leaders. In addition, the, our, the Teaching and Learning Department has created a folder structure for all schools and division leaders to have access to ready data throughout the year. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Dr. Poll. And my feedback this evening and the support that we're providing from school leadership, it'll sound familiar. We had a conversation in August around where we were from an academic standpoint. So, we've really focused hard, and it started during our summer leadership conference, to differentiate the support that we provide our leaders across the school division. We've tiered our schools in three areas: intensive, moderate, and occasional. We emphasize the role of the school support process and ensuring that that process is one of transparency as we are able to unpack the needs of our schools. And we do that by way of the work of the instructional leadership team, the principal, with an emphasis on our data based on subgroup. In addition to our school support meetings, our principals are receiving individual and ongoing feedback. Our principals are completing executive summaries over the summer, they turn in school improvement plans. And as we've seen in our school support meetings, those school improvement plans are ongoing conversations. They're plans that we add to, and they are data-driven conversations. And we would not be able to do this without the help of the Teaching and Learning Department, our specialists and coaches, as we look to provide prescriptive support to our schools. We're also working collaboratively, excuse me, to ensure that we keep an equity lens on all of our conversations. Our schools are not all alike, and our students have different needs. So, in those conversations, we're looking for a high-level specificity, and we like to focus on those individual needs of our schools. And more hard yeses as opposed to easy no's. As we have these conversations, we're really looking to make sure that our principals and teachers and instructional leadership teams understand that we're not there just to question them on their ability, we're there to provide them support. So, we look to continue to be servants and to make sure, as we get together as a team and review what we talked about, we push ourselves as a department to make sure that we're willing to provide additional support as needed. And also, we are tiering our leaders and ensuring that we are able to provide them the support that they need. We kind of look at it in some domains sometimes. We have leaders that need support in the relational domain, the situational, and the instructional. And we have a new commitment to leadership development in our department. And we'll be able to provide an update to the board on that later in the school year. So, at this time, Dr. Poll and I can answer any questions, and also, Mrs. Enoch, about, you know, any questions that you all may have about this report this evening.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Because it's cloudy for me, I'm confident it may be cloudy to the public as well, in terms of the new assessment criteria and how it all breaks down. If you go back to maybe the school quality indicator slide. And does that slide, I'll wait till you get there. In level of importance, if you meet these, the standards of passing in those subject areas at the, at those pass rates, then the school is accredited regardless of the other indicators? Or is it, if you meet the standards in all of those areas, but then you have an achievement gap below benchmark or absenteeism below benchmark, then you're accredited with conditions? Which, which are the case?
So, each of the indicators gets a level, a Level One, Two, or Three. One being the green, two, yellow, three, red. So, if you meet the level, you get a One. And then, even with the achievement gaps, using the same percentage rates, you want each of those individual achievement gaps to reach a Level One. Level Two can keep you accredited, but only for a certain amount of years. So, you can be, you can have yellows, you can have Level Twos. But within, by the fifth year, that criteria needs to go green. Okay? And it resets the clock when it does that. For overall accreditation, within the achievement gaps, you get an overall level for each of those seven subgroups. So, to have an overall achievement of, or, excuse me, an overall level of a One, you can not have any Reds, and you can only have one Yellow. To have an overall level of a Two, you can only have one Red. If you have more than one Red, then that whole achievement gap group will go Red.
Okay, so, if I paraphrase that, you can be Level One in multiple categories, but then have a Red, suddenly, you're accredited with conditions or not, or not, potentially not accredited. So, you must have Level One or Level Two really across the board. And that's still, that may be temporary, you may eventually get to Level One across the board in order to remain accredited. And I'm saying that because it's, I've heard you all, you give a presentation on it, and it's confusing for me, even after having, hearing it a couple of times. I'm sure, I'm sure it's confusing for the general public to explain that that is the, the new benchmark and the criteria.
You did well.
Mr. Brown, to take, piggyback on that, so you could be, actually have a Level One in several of those, but you could have absentee.
Right.
Basically, what you're getting to in Red, and so, even though all your kids passed all the tests, they're not coming to school.
So, then it's not an instructional issue, it's an attendance issue.
It's an issue. So, that's what we're getting at. That's what we're getting to. Yeah, we'd be credited, but with conditions. Smart kids that don't come to school. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. And we do have a final report for tonight on youth development, bullying awareness. It's Bridget Adams.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. I'm really excited to be here to share with you this evening an update on our efforts to create a positive school culture across our school division and to discourage bullying and harassing behaviors. Across the country, you know the month of October is National Bullying Prevention Month, but in Newport News Public Schools, October is Stand Month. We believe that the best defense in the war on bullying is a strong offense, which for us is a holistic approach to positive youth development. So, tonight, I will share with you some of the strategies and approaches we've utilized over the past year to address the issue of bullying. In Newport News Public Schools, we continue to use a multi-tiered response to bullying to provide the interventions and support that students need. But in our daily practice, our true goal is really to teach all students how to behave in a safe, respectful, and responsible way with the same intensity that we teach math and science. Interventions are an integral part of our school improvement efforts and our daily practice. However, they are sometimes attributed to a specific job title, like a school psychologist or a school counselor. And we believe that goals like improving student behavior and school culture can't be achieved unless the entire school community, including parents, share responsibility for positive youth development. Now, our previous youth development model was comprised of a tiered list of strategies and practices. And our new youth development model has been reframed into a simple, memorable equation that positive experiences plus positive relationships plus positive environments working together result in positive youth development. So, the new model helps us to illustrate that everyone plays a role in positive youth development, including teachers, bus drivers, security officers, child nutrition workers, families, community partners, and even students. And everyone plays an important role in the fight against, the important fight against bullying. The new model is encouraging our entire village to focus on key areas and to really ask important questions like, how are we helping students to build skills such as empathy, cultural competence, and self-regulation? How are we intentionally creating a sense of belonging and providing a safe space for all of our students? Or setting norms and expectations would make it like, which would make it likely for students to behave? So, by focusing on these key areas, we're creating an environment in which bullying and harassment, we hope, are less likely to occur. Some of you may remember that three years ago, in June of two thousand and sixteen, we introduced to the board and the community Stand. This is our student-led campaign focused specifically on creating and maintaining positive school cultures and climates, and consistently working together to discourage harassment among peers. So, instead of implementing a singularly focused bullying initiative or program, we have continually sought for the past three years to empower student voice and contribution at every level with the understanding that without students leading the work in the fight against bullying, it would be impossible for us to prevent bullying and harassment. Our students are active participants in our school improvement process. I think you heard us talk about our school improvement process and how important it is. But we continually encourage our schools to create new ways for students to lead, to serve, and to be involved in decision-making and planning, especially as it relates to school culture. For example, last year, our students led a, our students led a division-wide kindness campaign, which really challenged everyone, students, teachers, everyone, to think about their intentions and behavior toward others. Students also collaborated with dozens of community partners to host the first-ever Student Wellness Expo to promote student physical, emotional, and social well-being. And on any given day, you can find extraordinary student organizations in all of our schools, elementary, elementary through high school, advancing important goals such as bullying prevention, diversity and inclusion, and alcohol, drug abuse, and violence prevention. Several groups have even received reward, awards and recognition for their work, and we're really proud about that. This is evident that student contribution is making a significant impact that transcends our school borders and builds community both inside and outside of our schools. Citywide SCA, an organization which is open to all of our high school students, brings students together to address issues of greatest importance to students. Nisaya Gore is one of our executive board members. Their work resulted in several opportunities for student leadership and service, some of them you can see reflected here. They took the initiative to meet with our Executive Director of Student Advancement and her team to develop initiatives designed to promote student emotional well-being, such as the Student Wellness Expo. They also collaborated with community partners to conduct a human trafficking symposium, a student workshop on civic engagement, and the annual kicking it to violence kickball tournament and community block party, which this year was co-sponsored with the City of Newport News and other community partners. We struggled to get one event off the ground a year, and they did all of this on their own, so I'm very proud of them. To empower student voice, they meet several times each month, so that students have the opportunity to learn, that all students have the opportunity to learn how they can get involved in meaningful projects, projects that are important to them. This year, they have decided that their primary focus will be on improving teacher-student relationships. So, I'm excited about that. And we are fortunate that we have a few of our Citywide SCA executive board members that are going to come up. They have a gift for our board. So, they're going to come up. We have with us Andres Gonzalez from Denby High School, Jamie Soto from Warwick High School, and Brandon Hedgepath from Woodside High School. And I just want to give them a hand for all of the work that they're doing. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. This is my think tank. This is my think tank. So, what they have given you is your official Stand t-shirt. Okay? So, as part of our National Bullying Prevention Month, for the third year in a row, all of our schools developed a detailed Stand Month. Yay, that looks nice. A detailed Stand Month calendar of events and activities that would really help to communicate the meaning and purpose of Stand, not just to the students and staff, but also to the community. And on October seventh, Newport News Public Schools celebrated Stand Day in recognition of World Day of Bullying Prevention. So, across our entire school division, our teachers, staff, and students wore blue in solidarity to demonstrate their commitment to stand against bullying behavior. A complete list of Stand Month activities, and I think it's about fifteen pages long, across our school division is available at the bullying prevention page on our Newport News Public Schools website. All of our teachers and staff play a critical role in our efforts to create positive environments. And in addition to teachers being committed to building positive classroom cultures, they support our Stand principals every day in their instructional practice by volunteering as mentors and club advisors for hundreds of clubs, sports, and activities available to our students in grades K through twelve, and by working diligently to ensure that every child, every child in our school community is connected. And not just teachers, but also our security officers, our bus drivers, child nutrition workers, and various staff members play an important role in modeling behavior and setting expectations for our students. Just want to take a step back to last year. As you may remember, last fall, we examined our bullying reporting and resolution process. We shared with you this representation of the flow of communication and action from the time bullying is reported until the time that it is resolved. And to get a better picture of what was actually happening, we met with all of our elementary and secondary assistant principals to actually walk through this process and identify any challenges that they may have been encountering. We also partnered with our student advancement team and a local community partner, Parents Against Bullying, to conduct focus groups with more than one hundred middle and high school students to get their perspective on where bullying happens, why it happens, and what we need to do to prevent it. And then, finally, we conducted a family forum on bullying with students, families, Newport News Public School staff, and various community stakeholders. So, the comprehensive review of bullying, of the bullying process resulted in a set of recommendations, many of which have all of recommendations, many of which have already been implemented, but tonight I would like to share with you one of the outcomes of that review. So last year, we shared with you our concerns about the effectiveness of the bullying hotlines. We needed to provide a means for anonymous reporting that would give us the ability to capture important data regarding bullying incidents and resolution. So we have selected the Safe Schools Alert tip reporting system, which enables anyone to report bullying by sending a report via the web, text message, email, or by calling a dedicated phone number which is manned 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So Safe Schools Alert makes it possible for our staff to respond to reports and obtain additional information to support investigation and resolution, all anonymously. Each school has designated ticket managers who receive and process the reports, and the system generates reports by location and incident type to help us monitor what is occurring, so that we can make the necessary adjustments. We have distributed all of the informational materials to our schools and trained our school staff, so we're in the process now of sharing information about the tool with our families and other stakeholders. We could not have accomplished all of the work that we have, we have, without the continued involvement of the community partners, who have continually worked hard to build bridges between our schools and the community. They provided extraordinary service learning opportunities for our students, conducted anti-bullying assemblies and workshops, presented professional development for our staff on building inclusive schools, funded extracurricular activities and experiences for kids, and created leadership, leadership and civic engagement opportunities for our students, which raise awareness and challenge students to take action against bullying and violence of all kinds. I've highlighted just a few community partners here, and we're really grateful, extremely grateful, for the village that supports our students every day, because we know that bullying is a huge problem nationwide, and we need all of the help that we can get. While we are well aware that change takes time and that bullying remains a problem nationwide, we're confident that we're moving in the right direction, and with continued focus, our students will be equipped to stand up for each other and to be allies who say, bullying, we don't do that here. That is the goal. Moving forward, we will continue to monitor the bullying reports and make adjustments as needed, create more bridging opportunities for students in our high schools to volunteer and serve in our middle and elementary schools. So we've actually paired our schools together, so our high school student organizations will begin to do work in our middle and elementary schools. Focus on building pro-social skills in students and making sure that all students are getting an opportunity, all students are getting an opportunity to lead, serve, and be involved in decision-making. And finally, we will continue to work with our student advancement team and our students themselves to promote positive emotionality among our students. Tonight, we've explored how our students, teachers, school leaders, and the community partners stand with us against bullying and harassment, and how we all work together to promote positive culture across Newport News Public Schools. In closing, we would like to invite you and the community to stand with us at the annual Stand Night at Todd Stadium this Friday, October 18th at 7:00 PM. This event provides all Newport News Public Schools students, staff, and the community with an opportunity to stand together against bullying during a special halftime activity, which we call a Unity Walk, demonstrating our commitment to building bully-free schools. We, we've given you your gift, your Stand T-shirt. We hope that you, we will see you at Stand Night this Friday with your shirt on. This concludes my update on bullying prevention in Newport News Public Schools, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Yes.
Dr. Bass?
Thank you for your thorough report. I think our youth development is top in the state, if not in the country, and I'd like to commend you on a fantastic job with that program. I was just wondering, how is restorative practices kind of woven in? Can you just maybe touch on that a little bit?
Restorative practices is not currently a factor of our youth development department. I can't speak, I wouldn't be able to speak to the current plan for restorative practices.
Okay, I was just wondering, did you make for, for some of the results that you're looking for, were you making some connections with that?
Well, I do know that restorative practices, such as some of the shuttle kinds of activities, some of the activities that you would use in restorative practices are not recommended for bullying negotiations, because you don't want the bully and the, the person who's being bullied in the same space. There is a practice called the Shuttle Practice that can be used, and I know that when we did our restorative practices training, it was a part of our training that all of our schools did receive, but it is not something that we're advocating that they use for resolving bullying issues.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hyman's.
Thank you for that report, and I, I love the emphasis on creating a family environment and a safe environment at school for our children. Sometimes I get approached by community groups that want to partner with Newport News Public Schools, if they want to get involved in our Stand program, are they able to? And how can, who should they contact?
They should contact me. We welcome community partners, as I said, it takes a village. We have a process for welcoming folks into, I mean, we, we have a process, God bless you, for welcoming community partners to work with us. Obviously, we have to keep our babies safe, but I would be more than welcome to talk to anyone who wants to support our Stand initiative.
Thank you.
We welcome that.
And just, just a question asked at the last board meeting by Mr. Illey regarding anonymous reporting, could you turn back to that slide one more time about the, the tool? And I told you I'd get back to you with an answer to that question. This is the answer right here. This is our new reporting process for anonymous tip, tip reporting. So it also works for bullying reporting also, but it is an anonymous tip line also, so students, parents can actually report in on that. We used to use a phone system. This is more reliable and is more safe and anonymous, so we'll be communicating, putting more communication out. Right now, flyers have been sent out to every school, but we will do a thorough communication sweep in the near future, letting our students, our parents, and everyone know that we do have a process for reporting concerns regarding safety, student safety.
And what is this called? What should we refer to it as?
It's, it's the Safe Schools Alert.
Safe Schools Alert.
And the beauty of this also is that there's two-way communication. So when families say, I reported something and no one got back to me, there is going to be a response back that says, we've received your report, we're working on it, we'll get back to you, or we need more information. So it really gives us the opportunity to connect with the people who are making the report and to track that. So we'll get the reports on the tickets that came in, we can see which has been responded to and so forth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. But those were our reports today. 5.04, our attendance report, 5.05, our membership report, 5.06, construction report. Those were part of your packages. If no one has any questions on those, we'll move on to 5.07, comments by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I begin my prepared remarks, I have made an effort this year to try to, at least a few days a week, start the day in a school, and this, today I had the opportunity to visit Heinz Middle School for a school support meeting, and it was a very good meeting, and they actually gave me a pin, if you see that lights up here, that says Heinz Middle School, and they are on the rise, and their science lead just put, put it out there that they, their goal is to beat the scores at, what, Gildersley? So, so they're, so they're competitive as well. So shout out to Heinz Middle School, that was a very good school support meeting, and again, just, just starting the day in a school and getting a chance to talk to the lead teachers in every core area on how they plan to improve student achievement in their schools is very refreshing. And as you saw in the energy of the folks here presenting tonight on, on how we plan to work with our schools and support them, I can tell you that that support has been well-received by a lot of our professionals at our schools as we, as we meet with them. I'd like to congratulate each of our honorees this evening, our apprenticeship graduates, our transportation employees of the year, and of course, our school board members for your commitment to growth. Our apprenticeship program, one of a kind in the state, is a great investment in our staff, and as you can see, many of our employees are taking advantage of the professional development that's being provided. So congratulations on completing their studies. Last week, the Virginia Department of Education released the on-time graduation rates. As you saw this evening, it was great news and coverage for Newport News Public Schools. Our graduation rates for this class of 2019 at 94.8% higher than the state average and highest among urban school divisions, and almost all of our student subgroup graduation rates are higher than the state average. So that's phenomenal work for the professionals in our school divisions, and we'd like to give a shout out to our graduation coaches, our school counselors, teachers, administrators, support staff, attendants, clerks. All of these folks are instrumental in making this work happen, but I just want to remind folks that this data here is representative of an investment in graduation coaches, okay? When you invest in the right people to get the work done, that's when you see progress. So when we, when we talk about the needs of our school division and getting the right people around the work, this is the type of, of, of results our students are capable of. So during, I mentioned the student support team processes, so they were, they've, they've been very, very successful this year with several schools we've visited. Many schools on the spot have asked for resources that they needed and haven't, being able to sit there and have a conversation about growth in student achievement and be able to tell us, tell a school, yes, if you need this to move your plan forward, we'll get it to you as soon as possible, and making, making that happen is, is the way we're going to improve our schools. So kudos to student leadership and our, and our school curriculum team for being at the table, Dr. Mitchell with her student, with student advancement, working with our special education students. We're all at the table with our principals and our assistant principals and our teachers trying to make it happen, and that, and that it's going to be a successful process for us. So this Thursday, October 17th, we are hosting our strategic plan and profile of a graduate kickoff. It's time. So the, the clock is ticking, we're ready to start in, looking into the future, and the best way to do that is with a solid profile of what a Newport News graduate will be and to develop the school system that will get us to that point. So that work will begin on October 17th with the graduate kickoff meeting at 8:30, and please, 8:30 AM. So please contact us if you'd like to be a part of that work, and Dr. Poole is leading that effort. I'm looking forward to the great work of this committee as we come together to develop our five-year strategic plan and our profile, and which will guide us for the future. Our high school counselors are offering extended office hours on Thursday, October 17th from 4 o'clock to 7:00 PM to assist students and families. This month, our counselors will offer assistance with completing the online financial aid application. Families may call their high school counseling office to schedule an appointment. And on Thursday, October 24th at 6:30 PM, I am hosting my first superintendent's family forum. I host several of those this year in various parts of the city, giving parents an opportunity to not only meet me, but hear from me and ask questions about our school division and the education of their children. The first meeting will be October 24th at 6:30 PM. I'm hosting a meeting with parents in the southeast community at the Downing Gross Cultural Arts Center. Now, our topic of planning for that evening is Huntington Middle School. So I'm looking specifically for parents of school-aged children in the southeast community whose students would either currently or, or in the future attend Huntington Middle School to join me and share their input in how we can best serve their children currently residing in the former Huntington Zone as we look at this transition period. I believe that with any planning that we do in the future, it's important that we look at our most important constituents, first being our teachers, our students, and then second being our parents, to ensure that we are all on the same page moving forward and that we have the best plan possible to serve students as we make decisions. So I look forward to that dialogue with parents. Hopefully, it'll be a packed room and, and with school age, with parents of school-aged children, and we can really get to the work of discussing Huntington Middle School and the future services that we provide their children. I'm meeting also on October 24th in the morning at Ivy Baptist Church, Reverend Swan has invited me to speak with, to his distinguished group of pastors in the southeast community about how Newport News Public Schools can partner with, with faith-based, faith-based organizations to meet the mission of our school division. So Pastor Swan has given me a, a green light to engage with several pastors, and what we're trying to find out is what are some ways that, that our local faith-based, faith-based organizations and churches can do to partner with the mission of Newport News Public Schools? So we're looking for that dialogue and looking forward to it, and I really appreciate the opportunity to visit Ivy Baptist Church again. So board members, if you, if any of you are welcome, are available that day, you're welcome to sit in on that conversation as well. I think it'll be an engaging conversation with some, some, some of the gentlemen in the southeast community. As you've heard earlier this evening in that great presentation by Ms. Adams, October is Bullying Prevention Month. While this commemoration occurs in October, Newport News Public Schools are encouraged to stand up for each other to prevent bullying and other negative behaviors every day. As she shared with you, our schools have numerous activities planned to support safe and welcoming school climates, and I want to take this opportunity to remind our students and families about our anonymous reporting tool, which is the Safe Schools Alert. Students, families, and staff may use this tool to report any unsafe activity via the website, the app, text, or email. So there are multiple mediums for, for reporting, and we will be continuously communicating this throughout the year. Most safety concerns are reported to us anonymously, that's important to mention. So this tool gives our students and families another method to communicate with our school administrators and safety and security teams. This week is also National School Lunch Week, and I want to take a moment to thank our dedicated Child Nutrition Services staff for preparing and serving nutritious meals to our students each day. With free breakfast and lunch for all students, we are serving more meals and encouraging and ensuring that our students are ready to learn and prosper. Thank you for your efforts. And I also want to acknowledge and thank the staff of our Transportation Department as next week is Transportation Schools Bus Safety Week. Every day, transportation staff ensures that our students are transported safely and on time to and from school, events, and field trips. We have a special event planned on Tuesday, October 22nd, to honor our transportation employees and to celebrate the receipt of the 15,000, well, I don't know if it's the receipt of the 15,000. We are receiving the 15,000s, okay? The receipt of the 15,000 Bluebird propane bus. So during this event, we'll be joined by representatives from Bluebird, the Propane Education and Research Council, and some of our other partners. And school board and other community leaders have been invited to participate in this event, right? So we hope you'll be able to join. I would like to remind our students and families that schools will be closed for students on Tuesday, November 5th for, for a teacher workday. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my long-winded, but very informative comments for the evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. So at this time, we have an opportunity for the audience to address the board again. Are there any cards? Are there any cards? There any cards? There being none. We'll move the agenda to item number seven, matters by the school board. Mr. Gore, you're first up.
Um, three things, you know, Stand Night, Woodside versus Kickitane, Todd Stadium, okay? Be there, please. Because bullying is like a major issue in like our community, and although we can't just solve this issue in one night, I believe like it's very important that we show support, because not everyone is as brave to stand up to bullying as we are. Raising awareness of, is of course important, and as Ms. Adams said, we are a village, and it's important that we treat Newport News Public Schools as one. One thing is, is that we can't expect students to come to school if they don't feel safe. So by all of us being together and all of us showing that we can stop bullying, it is ensuring a safe environment for our students. Another thing is the playgrounds issue. I remember when I was a little kid, I always wanted to like play on the playgrounds, and I was kind of sad when I had to like run a lap before I had to go, you know, play. But the thing is, is that, like, why should we take away this opportunity for kids? Because I know that playing on that playground was the only way that I was going to pay attention in class. Like, that was the only way. I might have to, you know, calm down after a little while, but, you know, it was the only way that I was going to store up enough energy after playing with my friends in order to pay attention. So I believe that that is one of the biggest issues, if not the biggest issue, because I remember, like, that was the one thing that I remember in elementary school, was playing with my friends. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bass?
Good evening. I had an opportunity to work at the food bank, and again, I just think that is a fantastic partnership with the school. We know how important food is for students, it helps them to be able to concentrate, to learn, when they have a filled stomach and they're nutritionally sound, so they were appreciative of the partnership, and, and I, I think that is one of the other great, one of, one of, one of many great things as far as Newport News Public Schools are concerned. I've run across many, many parents in the community, and they are just so excited and so grateful that every child has free lunch and free breakfast, and I think that's another wonderful initiative of the division, and just proud to be a member of Newport News Public Schools. So the research says that in addition to the month of May, that October is one of the most difficult months for students and for teachers. So the newness of the school year has worn off and, and things are kind of settling down. So I just want the teachers and staff to know that we are, you know, supportive of you, we realize the hard work that you do, we're thankful for the hard work that you do, and the students. And students as well, hang in there, listen to the teachers, and do what you need to do to get to that Thanksgiving break. For the parents, and especially the parents in the southeast community, but parents throughout the city of Newport News, I encourage you to come to the meeting on the 24th that Dr. Parker is hosting at Downing Grove. The future of Huntington, it's important for the residents of the southeast community, but it's important for all of the residents, for the city of Newport News, because what impacts the southeast community impacts the entire community, impacts the entire city. So it's important that parents come out, and I encourage you, those of you that are listening on television, please make sure that you share this with your neighbors and friends and come out and let your voice be heard regarding the future of Huntington. According to the plan for the school division, this is the last year that students will be at Huntington, so if things go as planned, it will close and it will cease to be in existence. And it's harder to bring something back that's gone than something that's already here to make it better. So I encourage everyone to come on out and be a part of that meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Okay. Well, it is Vice Chair Searl's Law's birthday today, so I wanted to wish her happy birthday. And, and as difficult as it is being a politician wanting to, I've got a lot of things I want to say, and closing comments, my gift to you is for me to be quiet so we can all go home.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Ely?
I just want to say happy birthday to Lisa. She's definitely been a positive and blessing to this board, so we're very glad to have you, and happy birthday. And just want to say all the presentations we heard today were very informative and very mind-blowing to know that Newport News has definitely continued to be on the right track and we're moving in the right direction, far as accreditation, far as new programs, far as being innovative. Like Mr. Brown said, my gift is to be quiet. Happy birthday.
Mr. Simons?
I, I also was so pleased to learn about the solar panels on the roofs of our schools. Really excited to see our apprenticeship program that we have. We really take initiative in Newport News Public Schools to improve the lives of our employees and their families, and so I'm, I'm really proud of all the innovation. Same in our area of youth development, having the graduation coaches, really pushing the envelope on youth development and making every child feel like their school is their family. I'll just finish by saying, I, I really recommend to all the students out there that, you know, that they take up the opportunity to start a new club and do something new in their school, to make their school better. Your teachers and your counselors are there to support you, and it's, it's really important for you to, to take advantage of all the opportunities that Newport News Public Schools have to offer. So I'll finish with that.
Thank you, Ms. Simons, of our birthday, young lady. Vice Chair, happy birthday.
Thank you all for the gifts. I think that one thing that sticks in my mind, it's been a very, very long day, but it has been a joyful day, joyful way to spend my birthday doing what I really am honored to do, and that's serving on this school board. And I listened to our close, our, our work session as well as right now, and just hearing these reports and the passion on what we're doing and how we're trying to be forward-thinking and how we're trying to make those efforts for our students better, not getting discouraged and finding new ways. It just is exciting, and so I'm just very thankful for serving in this district. And my gift to you all will be, I'm done.
Well, thank you, my chair. Great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools. 94.8% on-time graduation rate, 1.8% dropout rate.
Can we clap to that?
That's, that happens when kids are eating, so free food for everyone. A child is hungry, is not learning, so obviously, you know, the more we feed them, the more they do get to learn. And our comment today about the playground, we hear you loud and clear. I love to go outside on playgrounds and play on the monkey bars and climb. It was a little bit different when I was in school. Here's to Huntington. I want to thank those members of Ms. Searl's Laws and Dr. Parker and the city manager and vice mayor, the mayor, the team that he, the committee he has, got together to try to, us to be one group. We had a very, 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 I believe, forward-thinking meeting today about Huntington and what we expect of Huntington, and I believe that we are definitely on the right track. Hopefully, we'll have some type of answer, you know, before the end of the, end of the year. That's what we talked about today, so hopefully, we'll have that. For those parents, please come out to the future of Huntington. We actually need, as much as I see my favorite Huntington alum, we need to hear from the parents. We must hear from the parents. We didn't want to do anything that the parents don't want to do, so we must hear from you parents out there. So knock on the door, it's going to be in your area, get a ride, someone Uber them up, get to church, they'll probably provide the vans. I mean, we're looking for a full house, so the clergy that are out there, if you want to get a new Huntington, you want the kids to stay there, our students to stay there, please provide transportation for those parents who really want to come and hear the future of Huntington, because all we can do as board members is listen to the parents. I mean, that's our responsibility, the students and the parents. So the more parents we have, the better we'll have a, get an answer for you and give us direction of how the school should approach the future of Huntington. We're going to build a new one, but we need to find what we're going to do in the interim. That being said, I am, one person is missing today. Ms. Tracy Brooks is out today because the superintendent gave her birthday, so she's out there looking in television land. Happy birthday to you. And on that note, there's some other things I was going to talk about, but I do want to thank the young students from Stand for your T-shirts.
Thank you.
Thank you for the gifts. And hopefully, we'll see many of you out there on Friday. And that being said, it is, the night's over, it's 8:30. Happy birthday, Ms. Lisa. Go home and enjoy yourself. I adjourn the meeting.
So the Stand thing is at halftime?
It's at halftime.
Okay, I can make that.
I'm going to make it halftime.
So that's at like 8 o'clock?
Yeah, like 8.
Okay. Yeah, I, I can count this as a...